A portion of this city council.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. A portion of this city council meeting is conducted by teleconference and that Mayor Williamson is in Austin, Texas, and is participating today by teleconference in accordance, rather in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act. His remote location has been identified in the agenda for this meeting. Mayor Williamson, please answer the following questions. Can you hear me well?
I can.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Was the agenda posted 24 hours prior to this special meeting at the location where you are?
It was.
Is your location accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate from your location if they wish to do so?
It is.
Is any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting? Or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
No.
Can everyone clearly hear Mayor Williamson? The Brown Act requires that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting be taken by roll call. So I'm going to pass it over to Clementine to take role and provide information on how to participate and comment.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Barber is absent today. Information on today participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on this agenda, which is online at isearchmonterey.org. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In-person attendees must keep their phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting, and thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you Clementine, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Hoffa to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoffa. And with that, we're going to move into presentations. Recognition of Defense Language Institute Quarterly Joint Service Awards for Third Quarter Fiscal Year 24. I'm going to go ahead and read part of the proclamation as it applies to the folks who are here present, the awardees. So, and then once I read this, we'll give you an opportunity to come up and share some remarks. And if you would please, as we have in tradition, speak in your, in the, in the language that you're studying, and then we'll try to guess what language that is. So whereas the Monterey community is proud of the country, of the country service members, as well as its outstanding relationship with the LIFLC. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Tyler Williamson, Mayor of the City of Monterey, on behalf of our city council and citizens, hereby recognize the folks who are here today, the awardees, for a job well done and thank them for their continuing contributions to the armed forces and to our nation. So we're going to go ahead and start with Airman First Class Dominic Medina. Please, if you could, come up to the podium.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. So yeah, just if you would, please share some remarks in, in the language that you've studied and we'll try to guess what language that is.
Absolutely. First, I want to take the opportunity in English really quick to just thank all the members of the city council, as well as the mayor for inviting us, and that's truly an honor.
Mandarin Chinese.
You don't understand.
All right.
Mandarin Chinese.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll continue with Sergeant Jesse Morgan.
Good afternoon, ladies. Good afternoon, gentlemen. I just want to say as well, thank you very much for having me out here and thank you for the appreciation that you have for our institute and what all of our service members are working to do. For my language.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Arabic.
Arabic, yeah. All right. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, ladies.
And Technical Sergeant Sienna Trujillo.
Hello. I'd like to thank the city council again. I'm from the Bay Area, so I've always come to Monterey since I was a kid, and it's always been great. Um, so I have two languages, so I'll do my first one and then my second one, and we'll see if you can get both. Okay, so.
I'm going to guess Korean and Japanese.
Uh, yeah, Korean. The second one, first one's Pashto.
Okay, Pashto. Okay, interesting. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So, so now if you would come up, we'll go ahead and take a picture and we can hand you the proclamations here.
Where would you like us, sir? Right there. All right.
Virtual handshake to you all. And, and I think this is a first, if I recall correctly, of, of somebody speaking two languages. So kudos to that individual. All right. Thank you so much. And bear with me, I'm reading a script here. Councilmember Garcia says, call for public comments on presentation. So yeah, any public comments on this current item? Anyone who wishes to speak in the council chambers, if you could, please raise your hand or either stand up on the side here. It's on the next. Oh, yes. Thank you. So just to clarify, it's on this presentation of the proclamations for the DLI. It's, yeah, all right. Thank you. Yeah.
We always have to do that.
All right. Thank you. Anyone on, online? Five, four, three, two, one. All right, we have one raised hand.
This is a telephone caller with the last three digits, seven, zero, five.
Excuse me, I pass.
Go ahead, please.
Excuse me. Yes, excuse me, I'm passing on this one. Sorry. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I should have clarified. Do we have anyone else? No, it was just one. Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, we'll move into general public comments. If you would, please, if you're interested in providing a public comment on any items that are not on today's agenda, please either line up at the podium or off to the right there. If you feel like you'd prefer to stay seated, you can raise your hand as well, and we'll go ahead and identify you. Okay, so I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. We have 10 here present, and we're going to go ahead and identify. Oh, we have, sir, are you wishing to speak as well in the back? I quickly saw a hand up. Yeah, okay. So we have 11. All right. Anyone online who wishes to share a public comment, I'm going to go ahead and count down and please raise your hand. Five, four, three, two, one. We have three hands. So we have a total of 14. Can we do two minutes for public comment? That work? Okay. All right. So we're going to give folks two minutes for public comment, and we're going to start here in the chambers. So if you would, please, go ahead. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Anya Weeks, and I still don't have a vending permit. I was told by the chief planner Levi Hill that the legal department is making him use definitions of a vendor and substituting them for regulations. And so definitions are a description of what is being regulated. And regulations are rules that the citizens live by. Definitions are not regulations. And descriptions are not the same thing as rules. Definitions are stated in the singular. There's many places in the city code where it says, you know, a homeowner, a boat owner, a fisherman, a business owner. And the reason that things are stated in the singular is so that everybody who owns just one of those things is still falls under the purview of the law and can be regulated. So it does not mean that no one inside the city of Monterey can own only one of those things. The description of a vendor is someone who sells from a cart, table, stand, or rack. So legal has decided to use the definition to tell vendors they can only have one table or rack. That is a gross misreading of the code, and it also not only violates city, but also state law. I was told by Levi Hill to send a picture of a single rack when I have a stand, and he said that he isn't going to permit stand, metal stands anymore because there's a space on the top that could be used as a a shade structure, but I know that he permitted another metal stand just a week before he told me that. So I really feel that it's an absolute fact that we have been, my husband and I have been singled out because we are speaking up for a lot of vendors who can't speak up for themselves, and so we've been targeted, and the rules are ever changing. When we want to get our permit, we can't. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Lightfoot, LennonMurderTruth.com. I should sue you guys for infringing on my free speech rights, my ability to be seen, my ability to be heard. Two minutes. Everyone's got to suffer that because of me, because it's supposed to be three. Anyway, I'm going to get a song out of the way that puts rain on our politics. Kamala, blood from the bottom of the jar. Kamala, and yet they'll tell you she's a star. Your rights to own a gun, she'll try to outlaw. What's queer, she'll make the norm if she gets in. Your money, she will cripple with inflation. That's Kamala. The genocidal bombing of civilians, a second war that's cost us now a trillion. And World War Three is threatening our children. That's Kamala. That's Kamala. Who tried to shoot her rival at a rally, who's even used the courts, who's even trying to jail him in the courts. There's even doubts about the last election. That's Kamala. That's Kamala. A bald-faced commie plot is what we really got. If we're so stupid, we would vote for evil Kamala. Let's not. Now, what I know about the Bidens and the Clintons of the world is that they met with Stephen King in the White House, knowing Stephen King killed John Lennon for the globalists. Stephen King is laughing at you, Monterey. He's got your testicles in a, in a jar with formaldehyde on his shelf. When I'm in Utah breaking this story, I'll get the last laugh, believe me. You'll be coward of Fornia, the land that was too gay, too queer to care.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Athena Zunizo. My husband and I, Ben and Ethel Worf. And one like to point out on the application. The way it's designed is not really structured for stationary vendors, just more so cart vendors. To how it was earlier explained about descriptions being used as law, such as a table, is actually used in the form of it has an open ending. So there really is no actual stating of one table. So someone did not dot their i's or cross their t's. Third, it is, I'm extremely disturbed at the fact, even since the last time we've been here, people are being told still to put one table listed. And in the documentation, it states if we misrepresent ourselves that our permits can be automatically avoided. So basically, by the time we get our permit, we're already avoiding ourselves out if we accept those terms. And I just want clarification if possible. Do we stick ourselves in a situation to perjure ourselves? Become desperate and be at the mercy of something that has not been legally decided on? So we know how to fill out our form when we renew our permit next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
How are you? My name is Rafael Zunizo. I was here on the last meeting. And my preoccupation right now is I have to renew my permit this month for city vendors. And my, I'm asking for advice. Should I lie and say only one table? Should I take a picture of only one table? Or should I put all my tables to apply for the permit? I know it's going to be denied, and I'm worried because that's my only income. I'm on retirement right now. Good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. This is my first time here. I apologize for my English, but I can speak three different languages, Arabic or Italian or Spanish. It's up to you guys, but I'm here for the same problem, but please try to listen for my case because I have a little special case than anybody here. I'm working two different work. I've been working for three years and have never stopped, and they can confirm this. And I have in my shoulder like big family in Middle East. You know, the situation over there is horrible. We have a great president there. He didn't give anything or no fixing anything. So I take care of my father, 84 years. And sister with the three daughters, she is divorced, and all of them in the college now, and my family too. So please don't push me to go live in my car again, because when, since I came back from Egypt, because the pandemic, when I come back, I found only my car because the rent is go, because I had Corona wise, and I stayed there long time more than I have. And, and I lost my rent. So I start from $50. Now I, thanks to God, I have a business and I have another work. The company Monterey Bus is Groom Transportation. The manager tried to push us with no right to go out of the company with no right. So two days' work is not enough for everybody. And one table at the, at the Wharf to selling my stuff, I cannot do in this. I'm trying to grow up honestly with clean business, with helping everybody, with make everybody happy. So I'm here asking you, please, please try to help us to not have only one table, because one table, we can't, we can't do anything. We cannot do anything. If, if I go last month with the company rules, I would be in the street again because they didn't pay me for Henry in my stomach because the luggage I carry, it's hurt me. So they stopped me for two months and they didn't pay me anything. They said, even if you call the unemployment, we're not going to help you. So the, the, the Wharf, the Wharf, it's helped me. So please don't let them make us for one table. Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Burns. And what makes a professional? Well, a professional gets paid and may have a license. Professionals acquire licenses by promising to meet professional standards, like attorneys have a license to practice law. But if they're found to be unethical or incompetent, then attorneys lose their license, like a planner gets certified. But that certification can be taken away if a planner can't read or enforce a code. This is how professional life works. It takes time to obtain these powerful positions, and it's devastating when someone has their license revoked. My livelihood is being threatened, and the professionals involved have shown no concern. It's like they decided to revoke my license to vend my certificate to make and sell goods. But as a vendor, I don't have a professional board to come to my defense. All I have is a permit process, and it better not require me to misstate facts under penalty of perjury in order to get my permit removed, renewed. I know about legal history. I know how contracts work. Judges were originally called judges because they judged the fairness of contracts. And if a contract was found to be unfair, then the judge negated it. That was when it was called Courts of Justice. But today, judges don't judge contracts. Instead, they enforce contracts, and that is why the powerful use the courts of law to oppress the unsophisticated with take it or leave it contracts. Once signed, the signee has no one to appeal to. It's over. They sign the contract. That is what our planning department is doing. They have tricked people with no legal understanding, those with poor English skills, to contract out of their rights by forcing them to sign one table, take it or leave it contracts as a condition of vendor permit renewal. It's wrong when civil servants serve private interests. It undermines the public trust. We all know the Wharf businesses have an economic animus towards sidewalk vendors. So I ask you, our elected lawmakers, to control your professional staff. You are the bosses. I expect you to take action. I expect my vendor permit to be renewed without me being forced to perjure myself. If ethics review committees have to be contacted, then maybe it won't be my livelihood that gets revoked.
Good evening, Mayor Williamson, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Jonathan Amadi, and I am a candidate for the Monterey Peninsula Airport District Board, Division One, which is Seaside, Sand City, and a slice of Monterey on the other side of Laguna Grande Park. I'm a resident of Seaside. I'm running in this race because I'm sure, as all of you know, I'm running in this race because I'm sure, as all of you know, we're building a brand new terminal starting in September of 2025 for our airport. I've spent the last seven years working as a construction project manager, working on large infrastructure projects like hospitals and clinics. And I feel like I can use my experience in that work to benefit my community. I'm also running to ensure that we're reinvesting in our community by hiring local folks, especially local union tradesmen and tradeswomen to do the work of building our terminal. I thank you so much for your time. If you're interested in more information, you can visit my website. That's AhmadiForTheAirport.com. A H M A D I ForTheAirport.com. I also wanted to say a special thank you to Mayor Williamson and Councilmember Garcia's for your endorsement in this race. I'm also being endorsed by the Building and Construction Trades Council in this race. Thank you very much, and I hope you have a wonderful evening. So I'm not going to stick around, but I'm going to try to get to Sand City for their council meeting as well. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williamson and council members. My name is Martha Craftcheck and I'm here again to voice concerns about the $340 million Measure A bond MPUSD has placed on the ballot. $60 million of this taxpayer measure are earmarked for MPUSD staff housing. I understand the need to build affordable housing in our area and have seen the expectations of the California state mandate. There are many people who want and need affordable housing. But any affordable housing should be made available on the basis of need, not on someone's occupation or employer. Measure A taxpayer-funded housing would only be available to MPUSD staff and there is no guarantee that this housing would ever be built. Voters understand the housing needs and might consider supporting a citywide measure that addresses affordable housing for all. But taxpayer-funded Measure A does nothing to address affordable housing for all, only MPUSD staff. So I ask you again, how is that equitable? I am, I was sad and disheartened to see that Mayor Williamson signed the agreement in favor of Measure A. Apparently he sees nothing wrong with asking his constituents to dig into their pockets and go deeper in debt to fund MPUSD's irresponsible spending. Mayor Williamson knows this tax measure would cost property owners hundreds of dollars annually, affecting homeowners, renters and small business owners. Mayor Williamson also knows his constituents will be paying off this combined MPUSD debt of over a billion dollars for decades to come, long after he is no longer mayor. Most voters, including myself, have indicated that they have always voted for school bonds. However, we have seen MPUSD's actions and financial decisions and this time we will be voting no. I urge you to vote no on Measure A. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Colin Gallagher and I'm a resident of the city of Monterey. And I'm here to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda. Just wanted to say thank you for your time here this evening. And also wanted to add that the nature of my comment tonight is regarding a request I have made for a change and a clarification to city code, or that is my prior request for a city code revision, which has not yet been placed on any agenda relating to pods or pods and Uvals possibly, an item which is not on tonight's agenda. This was previously sent on July 24th to Lori Lynn Williamson in an email and to planning@monterey.org and to the city council members. I was told that I should come to speak before the city council and mention that I had submitted this as by a staff member that this would be kind of a necessary precursor to this item potentially advancing. And if any council member wants to take it up, that should be your prerogative or not. But it is, I suppose, in your court, if you would like to consider it further. I would also like to use the balance of my time to ask you to, one or more of the council members to give a voice to the various vendors who have spoken here tonight. And also, por favor, para organizar para ellos, para que ellos pueden seguir, continuar vender como ellos han dicho antes. Y para, para no, pues, para no cerrar los negocios de ellos. Gracias. I appreciate it. I think they need a voice and a spot at the table apart from this council session, perhaps in private with you to discuss this further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Eric Palmer from the Monterey Vista neighborhood. I just wanted to, a lot of us are breathing a sigh of relief now that there's a lot of quiet in our town with Monterey Car Week gone, but I know a lot of us understand the economic and tax revenue benefits. A lot of the dangerous activity in our streets is really concerning and frustrating to a lot of us. But I'd really like to commend the Monterey Police Department. I saw, we saw them out there and they just had really excellent social media. If you're not following them already, you should. They posted a lot of metrics almost every other day about the different arrests and citations that they're making. And I wanted to find out who the staffer was that I can commend them by name, but I didn't have time to. But I'd just like to thank Chief Hober for investing and prioritizing your excellent communications programs. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Alsa Kafi. I'm speaking in behalf ALS Construction and Innovation, Inc. We applied for the bid for the job of precedial water heater system. And we submit all the paper required, all the bid by time. Because we thought, we thought we submit the original bond in advance couple, couple of times for a different, different job. We thought is not required. I find out with the last minute, we have to submit it by hand half an hour ahead of time.
Sorry, sir. This item is on tonight's agenda.
It's not on today's agenda?
Yes. So we'll, you'll have an opportunity to provide, provide comment on that once the item comes up on the agenda.
It's not coming up today?
It is coming up today. Yes, this evening.
Well, you just informed today should be, and that's the reason I take my time and I left my job.
You'll have still the opportunity to provide your comment when the item comes up.
It's today.
Later on this.
Today, yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we're going to go online now?
Calling on a telephone caller with the last three digits, 705.
Yes. Recently, I had an interesting conversation with a friend of mine over Ukraine and Russia. And she and I both believe in democracy. However, I did point out really, we didn't have democracy because our city council and politicians have taken away our voices by limiting our public speech time. It used to be five minutes 15 years ago. Now it's two. The Bagley Clean Act was created because politicians were not hearing public concerns. And I can always tell how a mayor and city council feels about public input by how much time they allot to citizens. You, Mayor Williamson, seem to have squandered our public speech with every excuse imaginable. Yet your city council members and mayor allow yourself all the time in the world, which by the way, in the Bagley Clean Act emphasizes should also be curtailed. Please restore a five-minute public speech time for your citizens so we may freely express ourselves and help preserve our democracy instead of taking it away. I'm also pointing out that in this conversation I had, the policing forces always patrolling demonstrations with bully clubs and pepper spray and rubber bullets and how we had to get permits and permission to have demonstrations. We all know America is a pseudo democracy, a wolf clothed in democracy, but ruled by corporations. You are the key to keeping us a democracy. You are America or you are Russia. According to your actions in promoting free public speech, probably the most important freedom tool we citizens have. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, 837. Go ahead, please.
Hello, Brian Rosen here. I concur with the last commenter about the time limit. When I, we used to comment it was three minutes and I guess it was five minutes before that, but it just shows the disregard for the public. Three minutes is a good time in my mind. Two minutes is too short. You know, there was the kooky guy on a little earlier. And he did, it's funny how kooky people sometimes get something right. He was talking about the genocide happening over in Gaza. Well, that's true. There is a genocide going on. So I think that's a very important issue. I wish all the city councils would oppose it and call for arms embargo. This is just so wrong. Okay, I'm going to move on to something less important. Last week, Ed Smith, at the end of the meeting, under council comments, said we, basically he insulted us and said, we didn't know what we were talking about, about that the SURF project would preclude rail. And I looked on, on the agenda, council comments are to ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement or make a brief report. Or council member may provide a referral to staff for factual information. It doesn't say anything about bashing the public. And that's what he did. And we're not misleading the public. The Coastal Commission has made it clear, clear as day that any, if they did allow this, that future development would be very deed restricted against any future developments. It would not be allowed. You know, and the rail corridor would have to go into rare dune habitat, which Mr. Smith supports destroying. This is the most apparently, because he's for this horrible, environmentally bad project that destroying a good sizable chunk of the second most important dunes, at least eight rare species documented within the project footprint. That's a quote from the Coastal Commission. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And our last speaker is Esther.
Good afternoon, everybody. Esther Mountain, President of the Neighborhood Association of Laguna Grande Neighborhood and we are District Four. I commented last council meeting on the, the, the way that there's one particular neighborhood that is essentially taking over and trying to speak for the whole district. And I'm going to add to that. We have a problem with the way that this, the questions are going to be asked. There is a special interest behind this forum, the Monterey County Realtors Association. And the same person that works for them that I mentioned in the last meeting has been designated as the one that's going to pick the questions and how they're going to be asked at this supposed forum. This makes it a not partial forum. They have a special interest that is behind this forum. There's a candidate actually there today that is running for mayor, that is a realtor that was already given, given preference and special special attention when she was allowed to speak at a president's only meeting. So we, we, we have a lot of questions about why and how this is going to be an impartial event. Initially, we requested that maybe a nonprofit, nonpartisan, likely of women voters would do the questions and were completely ignored on that point. The other issue that we're questioning is why, for the first time in any forum, residents are being asked to register through a QR code. We want to know what's going to be done with that, with that data collection and how residents that are elderly, that don't have access to signing up that way are going to be admitted or if everybody is going to only be allowed to go if they sign up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for sharing your public comments. With that, we're going to move into consent agenda. And it has been, let's see, item five has been pulled by the public. And I think we want to go ahead and pull number four as well for the gentleman who was offering a comment earlier. Any other items from council which you have pulled? No. All right. So we're going to go ahead and call for public comments on consent items, including requests from the public. We've done that. Request speakers to line up at the podium, please. If you have any comments about consent agenda, please go ahead and line up at the podium. We'll identify you. Yeah, thank you. Gentlemen, yes. So anyone who wants to speak on consent agenda, please line up. And then we'll also go ahead and do a countdown for identifying speakers online. So I'm going to count down five, four, three, two, one. Okay. So just to clarify, we're requesting public comment for items on the consent agenda. Not including items four and five. Still there? All right. So we're going to go ahead and provide the opportunity for folks online.
This is a telephone caller with the last three digits, 902.
Yes, my comment is on item number five.
All right. Thank you. And the next speaker, this is for a telephone caller with the last three digits, 837. I believe it's Mr. Rosen.
Hi. Hi, I'm item number. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. What item are you commenting?
Item. I'm, I'm commenting on number five.
Okay, so.
Is this the right time?
We're, we'll get to those in a minute. If you can just hang on tight, please. Thank you. So with that, we're going to just do a roll call vote, please, for consent.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent minus items four and five.
Second.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson?
Yes. And thank you. I realize I jumped ahead there for a little bit. All right. So we're going to move on to items four and five. If you now is the opportunity, if you have public comment on items four and five of the consent agenda, please, if you would, here in chambers, line up. So we can identify you.
Do them one at a time.
Yeah, let's take four.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. We're going to start with item four. So folks in the chamber, want to provide comment on item four. And then let's go ahead and identify folks online as well. I'll do a countdown, five, four, three, two, one. We have one person. They went down. All right. Thank you. All right, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for having me again. My name is Alsa Kafi. I'm speaking on behalf of ALS Construction and Innovation, Inc. I'm a local business here, local small business in Pacific Grove. We have submitted bid over for Pacific for, for precedial water, water heater system. And we applied for some different bid in the past before then. And we submit some of our correct paper and we submit the problem around the bid bond. We submitted in advance or hard copy to the, to the city. We thought this everything going to be in system. So whenever we come in to bid over this, this, this job, we submit everything by time and we submit the bid include online, include it online. And then we figured out this is not acceptable. We have to submit it by hand. So we run and submit it by hand. And they said, no, this has to be way before, half an hour at least before the bid time. Talking about the bid bond here. So so far, we, the last, we, the lowest number of the bid, which we have thirty, 131,000 plus lower than any bidder in, in, in this, in this project. So the reason I'm here now, just to express myself and to think this is the small glitch. It shouldn't be there, but it has already happened. And I believe we still to ask you if have the hope also to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just point of clarification here. So we bring this back to council for deliberation and then move to five.
We'll just ask if anybody else has something to say about that as well.
About five?
Yes.
Yeah.
Item four.
Item four right now. Item four.
Anybody? So that's all for comment for number four.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, Mr. Sakafi, uh, was one of the bidders for a project at the Presidio of Monterey. Our bidding requirements require that he has to provide us, uh, no later, not, no later than 1:00 PM, uh, with, um, uh, with a bid bond or with a, uh, in two ways. One, it has to be electronically uploaded. And then we also receive, uh, at least one hour before bid opening, a hard copy of the bid bond. And, uh, that was not, uh, done. And unfortunately, based on that, since all the other vendors complied with those, uh, well-known regulations, um, we had to declare his bid as non, not compliant with our regulations. And again, bidding is, is, uh, is very much a day-to-day process. And, uh, we regret that unfortunately, we have to reject his bid. But, uh, the rules are the rules. And, uh, unfortunately, um, as Mr. Sakafi pointed out, it, it was a small glitch, but it has serious consequences because the other bidders, um, came all, uh, within, uh, the regulated, uh, regulations and within the time allotted to submit all bidding documents. And so we had to reject his bid. We looked at that, uh, also with the finance director, just to be sure that we did everything by the book. And, uh, we determined that, uh, this was, um, um, a, a bid that we had to reject based on the, um, published rules and regulations. And we cannot, um, unfortunately, um, pull an exception, uh, in this case. Uh, it was a hundred thirty thousand dollar lower bid. And, um, um, that's, that's part of the, the bidding process, you know, so. It happens.
All right, so we're going to bring it back to council for deliberation or motion? Questions? Okay.
So, um, for city attorney, so am I correct in assuming if council were to sort of reject all bids and direct staff to go back to bid, uh, this project, would that put, uh, the city in legal jeopardy?
No, the city standard bid, um, call for bids always includes language that the city reserves the right to reject all bids. It would legally be fine. I expect staff wouldn't want to delay the project.
So that kind of then is a related question in terms of timeline. How, how would, um, how would that kind of a delay impact, uh, our ability to do the project? Um. Councilmember Hafry, I just want to answer your question that you asked the city attorney from the operational perspective, because one does not do that. Um, so that's bid shopping that you're doing. And, uh, basically, you're inviting, um, bidders to give you a bid and then, uh, not follow the rules, and then stand in front of the city council and say, yeah, I know that I had a small glitch, uh, but I'm still a little bidder. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's unfortunate. We cannot reject bids just because we feel we want to get a better deal. Yes, uh, it's, it's, it's very unfortunate. Um, but, uh, it will make us not credible in the private industry if we go out for a bid, and they invest the time and the effort to submit a complete bid. And then, um, anyone can, uh, basically walk into the council chamber and say, hey, uh, I made a mistake. Please help us. So, um, I want to clarify that. I, I, I don't know if we are under the, the gun with the, with the project, but frankly, one does not do that. It, it would really make our life very hard in, in the, in the sector of, of bidding with, with private enterprises. So I, I appreciate that context, um, and can understand why that might set a bad precedent. I do still, my concern isn't about trying to bid shop. It's more about fairness for somebody who maybe doesn't speak English as their primary language or first language, and just the difficulty sometimes of dealing with bureaucracy, maybe not. And what I'm wondering is, uh, could we in the future offer workshops to kind of help train or, you know, um, facilitate, educate, uh, potential bidders on the process? Like, because I'm especially concerned about local, small businesses that may not have the staff or the expertise, but they might be quite competitive in terms of actually doing the work. So I'm just wondering if that's something in the future, if we could look at, if we don't already do it. Maybe we already do that. But it seems like that might have benefited this, uh, gentleman.
I, I will say, councilmember, I worked closely with the Public Works Department when we revised the city ordinance to include this early submission in hard copy format, because we were finding bidders were trying to get around the system so they could see what the other bids were before they submitted their actual, um, bond, so they could then get out of their bid. So this was a way to actually hold the bidders to their bids, and we did do outreach when we changed that.
Thank you. I guess I'm ready.
And, and if I may add clarity, this is, um, uh, a glitch. We have awarded contracts prior to this entity. Is that correct or no?
So we, we've, uh, pre-construction.
Yeah, let's, let's, I'm sorry. I just got a misinformation, but I didn't want to present anything wrong. So let, let Andrew explain it, what we did.
So we've had. We've had some interactions with this entity in the past. Uh, before every bid, we have, uh, pre-bid meetings where we allow every bidders to ask us questions about the, uh, requirements, the conditions of our contract. So we do have correspondence with this entity in the past, walking through the bid bond process and what the supplemental requirements are.
Thank you.
Councilmember Seth?
So when the bid is, uh, released, what's the written material that a, uh, potential vendor is receiving?
And I appreciate the comment from staff that there is a, uh, an open door to discuss and ask the questions. But, you know, so the, the bid process at the state, the federal level, and cities are all, all kind of different, but they follow basic principles. When we announce the bid, how is it announced? And what material is loaded to a system that a future vendor may be able to read, download, um, assign staff, hire staff, uh, and seek that clarification they may need? So I just, for the publics, I think it's, it's an interesting point. Before we get to the decision point, how is that material advertised?
Sure.
That's a good question. So when we are preparing bid documents, we prepare a notice to bidder, and we use, uh, OpenGov as kind of our central advertising platform. There are other clearinghouses, which also then kind of copy and paste and display and advertise our notice to bidders. So what's uploaded is our plans, our project specifications, which includes all our bidding requirements, what we're going to require at the time of bid, before bid, so that every bidder knows what to expect. We also schedule pre-bid meetings so that any applicant can reach out to the city, ask us questions in real time, and we'll respond by, uh, an established deadline, so that all bidders have the same information, and it's completely fair and level playing field. So every, every potential bidder has the opportunity to ask us questions, ask for clarification, and we'll provide a response within a, a scheduled date before the bid opening.
Right. And then on agenda item four, was the announcement of a, um, a bond posted in that initial instructions on, uh, it's open?
On OpenGov?
OpenGov, okay. And was it included in that packet?
Yes. So it was included in our technical specifications. Every one of our technical specs does have a bid bond requirement.
Okay. And this was the only bidder that did not include, uh, the bond?
I believe so. I believe this was the only bidder that submitted a partial bid, which was, been considered to be non-responsive.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Steph.
Andrew, really quick, a, a clarifying question in terms of the timeline. What, what kind of timeline are we talking about here if from when the bid goes out? Or, sorry, the, the.
The notice to bidder? Yes, good question. So typically, we advertise for about three to four weeks. About at the halfway point, we'll schedule our pre-bid meeting where applicants or potential vendors can ask us any questions. And they can also submit us questions in real time on OpenGov or through email. Every question that we're asked, we compile into an addendum and publish, uh, the responses of those questions. So every potential vendor, a bidder has the same information. So even if they don't ask us questions at the pre-bid meeting, if we get something via email, through a phone call, or through the OpenGov portal, we'll prepare a response, and then we'll publish it on the, uh, OpenGov website through an addendum, so every bidder has the same information.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry. Just made it.
Yes, uh, Mayor Williamson?
Yeah, can I clarify? Is there an appeal process for, for applicants that may have a concern around, around the application process?
There is a bid protest process. I'm not as familiar. I'm going to call on a lifeline.
Yes, Mayor, the bids all include a bid protest process. And if a bidder were to be actually declared as not responsible, as opposed to just not responsive, then there's an appeal hearing procedure provided as well. There was not a bid protest received in this case.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the clarification. Um, I think with that, I'll go ahead and make a recommend, uh, a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, we'll move on to item number five. And if anyone in chamber has any comments about item five, please go ahead and stand by the podium.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a brief statement of what item five is from the city manager or staff?
Thank you. Yes, why don't we do that?
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Councilmember Garcia and, uh, council. This is, um, uh, item number five is, is a project to, uh, allocate funding uh, for a community, community-wide forest and management fuel reduction pro, uh, project. Um, as council is very well aware, we, uh, are, uh, every year annually providing, uh, funding for, uh, fuel belt, uh, management. We are, the city is surrounded by various green belts. And, um, after every winter season, uh, we are, uh, going into the green belts with contractors to, uh, clear them up and make them, uh, quite a bit safer, uh, by removing fire fuel from, uh, from the, those areas. So this is, uh, an NCIP project that was funded with, uh, uh, up to a million dollars. Uh, last, uh, two weeks ago, the council approved the, uh, the contractual part of that to, uh, award up to a million dollars to do diff, to two different contractors to help us, um, uh, get this project done. Um, this is now the, the budget action to allocate a million dollars. Uh, time is of the essence for this project. This is the time of the year when we are conducting green belt fuel reduction. And, um, again, this is, uh, something that, uh, the city has been doing for decades, year after year.
Thank you for that. Uh, and thank you, Councilmember Smith. I'm trying to get the rhythm. So thank you. Uh, all right, so folks who have, uh, a comment on item number five, please go ahead and stand by the podium. Anyone else? We have one. Okay. We're going to go ahead and identify. You can go ahead to the podium. We're going to go ahead and identify folks on Zoom as well. I'm going to count down five, four, three, two, one. We have two. All right, we're going to start in chambers. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Monique Caldi. Thank you for having me here, and I'm pleased to be here. I am talking about item number five, and I'm very glad to see that staff has recommended a million dollars to be allocated. But the council could actually do more. We need to afford for more funds to help our most needy residents. Those who sit on a fixed income, who can't take care of themselves, to reduce the fuels by them. So I realize that we are going after the green belts, but we have to look at private property as well. And we need to make sure that we do more for our city. We're only as good as our weakest residents. We have to save our city. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll go to Zoom.
This is for the telephone caller ending with nine zero two.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty, and I have a presentation. That I submitted to the city, a PowerPoint.
While we get it ready, why don't I take the other caller? Um, this is for the telephone caller with the last three digits eight three seven.
Did we get two minutes or three?
Three.
Okay. Okay. What the city manager said that this has been happening for decades and decades may be partially true. But cities all over have stepped up the effort because of the growing wildfires and global warming. So now it is being, things are being so stripped of the ecosystem that the animals are really suffering as a result of it, and the wildlife. And when we need to get at the root, he says, we, we have no time to lose. We have no time to lose at getting at the root of the problem, which is our greenhouse and global warming. And this is how you stop fires. You don't do a Band-Aid approach. That ends up heating up the forest more than ever, because you're just stripping the ecosystem. And they're trying to do this all over, uh, based on fear. What you need to be doing is getting at the roots and really working hard to reduce emissions. Because look at Carwick. Politicians, one side of their mouth, they love it, and you get a million cars. And then the other side of the mouth, we're concerned about global warming. Well, get the train. The, the city council years ago, this is how you reduce fires. You get to reduce emissions, and you get things like mass transit in. I remember how excited Mayor Albert in the city of Monterey was years about, ago, about bringing the train back to Monterey. And it was in the plan. And you can get all those people coming down to Carpool, big incentive, Carwick, big incentives to use the rail. But don't strip the forest of their ecosystem. Don't succumb to the fear disease and overdo it, which is what is happening all over. It is, uh, really wrecking up the whole quality of life for the animal kingdom, which, eh, what in the, and the, the city manager, shame on him for cutting down all those trees and fishermen's war parking lot to make room for more parking spaces. And new trees take a long time to, to equal the greenhouse emissions. And so please don't succumb to the craziness of overcutting and over, uh, plowing, uh, the natural ecosystem. Yes, them, I, is understandable, but not the way it's being proposed. And that's my comment. Please work on the train. Fast track that. Get Ed Smith to work on it. Instead of a surf busway that will, uh, only bypass three miles of freeway. Thank you very much.
The next speaker will be Nina Beatty. And unfortunately, we have an error message in Microsoft that doesn't allow us to present your presentation, Ms. Beatty. The error message reads, read only. This is an older file format, but we'll make sure that council receives your presentation. In the meantime, you have three minutes for a verbal presentation.
Well, I had, in my presentation, I had pictures of a before and after thinning process. The, is this forest management or is this forest destruction? Um, we heard in June, uh, from, uh, a presentation on the community-wide, uh, forest management plan that was going to be partnering with PG and Carmel. And the information in this meeting showed that they were going to be thinning the forest, um, which I'm assuming this is the same project. Um, thinning is a US Forest Service, um, practice to sell off habitat to biomass and biomass companies overseas, which then convert it into wood pellets for sale, sale to the EU and Asia. It's their practice. Anything done by other agencies is simply using that as, oh, this is a good for the environment sort of thing. But the pictures of the before and after devastation, um, before green, lush, damp forests, and afterward, uh, reduced trees, because trees are cut down in this process, and bare soil. Um, the Viejo Road Pilot Project, which is to the south of Highway One as you go up Carmel Hill, is an illustration of what's planned for all three of our cities, um, that strips, including on very steep slopes. that strips, including on very steep slopes, strips everything off of it, including some trees. And the erosion is gonna be incredibly bad. And the community-wide is all the forests in Monterey, Pacific Grove, and Carmel will be treated this way. And my question, one of my questions is where will the animals live? Thinning is not a fire reduction strategy. It's a commercial strategy for profit. And the research shows that it increases fire danger. I sent a letter to the city council with information on the lawsuit against Bureau of Land Management for similar practices. And the judge stated this was, this was not, there was a lot of research showing that this actually increased fire danger. I'd asked the council to think about this carefully. I've asked you to postpone this item and consider it carefully. You need, the city needs a responsible fact-based plan that actually reduces fire risk. And item number five is not the right way. There's more information on these US Forest Service derived plans on the johnmearproject.org and featherriveraction.org. And I really ask the city to, to think about this very carefully, that the decisions you make will eliminate habitat that can't be brought back easily. And it's, it's a loss to our community, and tourists will notice.
All right, thank you all for your comments. With that, oh, we have Mayor. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Gino. Just a few thoughts here. I, I know Monique came up and, and shared the idea of funding to help property owners. I think it's an intriguing idea. I'm, I'm open to considering that. I guess it's always helpful to look at where funding is gonna come from to support those types of programs. So I'm eager to engage in a conversation there in regards to how we appropriately manage our budget in regards to new programs. But something, something good for us to consider, because we need to make sure that we keep our, our community and neighborhood, neighborhood safe. Regarding the comment around the surf project, I don't know how that really intersects with the funding that we're allocating as it, as it relates to fuel, fuel reduction. So I, I guess I, I didn't see those comments to be overly helpful. I think this is a distinct and different program that we're, we're considering today. So I, I know that there's a lot of mixed feelings regards to, to this surf project. But I just kind of, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Maybe somebody can describe to me if I, if I maybe missed the, the intersection in regards to how that relate, relates. And then the last piece that I would speak to is just the need for us to look at this from a balanced perspective. The fact of the matter is, is that, and, and the reason why I'm gonna support this moving forward today is because we're talking about people's lives. The, the, the need for us to, to fund this program is essential in fire season for, for our neighborhoods that are in the forested areas. And, and, and to ensure that in, in the wet season, in the rainy season, that when trees come down, they don't land on people's properties and, and kill people. This isn't an, an easy decision, though, because just like some of the speakers spoke to tonight, there's the real impact that we're having on our natural environment and what that means to our community and, and our identity here. So I, I completely respect the fact that this is a challenging topic. And I think that it begs us to lean in a little bit more and make sure that we're having open and transparent dialogue with the community around how do we appropriately manage this moving forward? I mean, particularly in skyline, you know, how are we gonna manage that appropriately moving forward in the future to, to ensure the, the safety for everybody and, and taking care of our natural environment and, and, and other life, as the speaker spoke to. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm gonna support the initiative today. But just, just recognizing the need that we need to look at this from a balanced perspective.
Any, yes, Councilmember Smith?
So we have a very interesting town, as you know. It's not just the ocean, and it's not just the lower hills. But in many parts of our community, we have high ground with forest, right up against the, the fence line. And in many cases, right at the property line that impacts our forested areas. So this process, just to remind everybody, that's, it's revealed in the agenda item under discussion that the NCIP committee voted on the recommended list from twenty-four and twenty-five. And they voted on eighty nominated projects citywide. And of the citywide projects with the, the voting system that the neighborhood representatives use, which works very well for representative government, the Community Wide Forest Management and Fuel Reduction Project was ranked the highest priority by NCIP. And that's people that is included that live at the Beach Track or New Monterey, that don't have any trees that really impact them. They, they collectively said this is the highest priority to make our city the safest it can be. So this is an ongoing program that we've fortunately been able to, to do. It's not ever enough. There may be future opportunities to, to add to it and, and do some program addition for those properties that may, may have the necessity to have some of their own vegetation cleared from their property. Acting on this now, I support it, and I think it's the right, the right time to move. We have two bidders that are identified in this program for the expenditure of the money. And to get on this or to delay it would be really silly. I know this has universal and wide support, and so I support it. And I don't wanna jump the gun if there's other comments. I'm ready for a motion if you don't have any comments. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item number five.
I'll second that. All right. Mayor, do you still?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanna make one quick comment, and I don't wanna be contentious here. But I, I just wanna be careful with, with our wording. I, I know that there's a lot of strong feelings that folks have in, in our community, including my partner, by the way. Ivan feels very strongly about this topic in regards to what we're doing in regards to cutting trees down in the city of Monterey. So I don't wanna belittle that by saying that there's universal support. I think I agree that there, there's, there's some broad support around this, and that's why I'm supporting us moving forward with this today. But I don't want to lessen the, the, the feelings that, that, the, the the feelings and the raw feelings that exist around folks that are, are concerned about this, which is, I think, why there's a need for us to continue having a deeper conversation here around finding a, a good balance.
Thank you. Make an additional comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanna remind the, the folks that are hearing this and our action on this is it's a community-wide forest management and fuel reduction, where our forestry and our experts that really can assess, but it does not mean that we're looking for trees to cut down. It means that we are looking to get the dead wood out of the forest or the hanging branches that are dead and the fire risk. So it doesn't mean that we're attacking live trees that are healthy and not, not in anybody's, they're not threatening the property. So I, I know, thank you, Mayor, for your comments, but I, I know that the public sometimes confuses that this is not a program to go find healthy live trees and find an excuse to cut them down. This is about cleaning up the forest that has debris from trees that have come down and branches that are dead that are a fire risk. So there is a, a true distinction, and we have a clear, we have a qualification for a tree to be removed, and you have to get a permit to do that. And it's a high, high bar, because we are a Tree USA city. And we appreciate our living trees as long as they are healthy and not threatening life and public safety. So there's a distinction here. This is cleaning up the forest that's, that's debris.
If, if I may, I, I think that there's, I think that's kind of where some of the concern is, though. I, I think the, the folks that spoke in, in concern or, or objecting us moving forward with this are expressing that, that decision that our city forester is making might be too lenient. And I'm not saying I necessarily agree with that, but I just, that's why I'm just saying it's deserving of, I think, additional conversation and, and ensuring that we're allowing their voice to be included in the process about how we, how we move forward in the future. So I, I think we're all speaking the same language here, and I, and I just wanted to make sure that we don't exclude those that, that feel in disagreement with the decision that we're making today.
Yeah, and I agree. It's, it's good to get it all out there, and I wanna make sure that the public knows what we're voting on tonight. And it's not about modifying tree programs or tree policies. This is about cleaning up deadwood.
All right, if we're good, then I heard a motion, and I heard a second. Can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
Yes.
Thank you for that. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to a public appearance. It's item number thirteen, deny appeal of encroachment permit, twenty-four dash one zero three eight eight seven one. And I'll go ahead and pass it over to our city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. This is an item that appeal, appeals a decision by city staff to place a pod into the city right away using a temporary encroachment permit. Those pods are pods that usually are used by folks that are moving from one apartment to the next apartment to use it as a storage, temporary storage area. And then the company picks up the storage pod and transports it to the next apartment or a home or home where they wanna live. That appeal in front of you is an appeal that have lost, has lost the reason to appeal because the pod has been removed after a week it was in place. So I will ask our community development director to use, hopefully, less than three minutes to present the appeal.
Just one moment, please. Thank you.
I wonder if it would be helpful while we're waiting for the presentation, if, if maybe the city attorney could just review with council the process, since this is sort of a, a different kind of item. So in terms of how long people get to speak, who gets to speak, when we should speak, et cetera, et cetera.
Sure. So this is an appeal. Each side will be given a similar amount of time. I think staff thought it would take three to five minutes in that range. So each side would have the opportunity to present their position to council. Council can ask questions of each side. Ultimately, then we'll take public comment and go to deliberations again.
Thank you very much. This afternoon, you're considering a staff recommend to deny appeal of an encroachment permit. I think the city council is well aware of what a pod looks like. We can, you've probably seen those in our community before. In terms of background, on July eleventh, Greg Lindenhall replied for a permit. After technical review of that application, on July seventeenth, the city issued the encroachment permit. It was good for a, they applied for a finite amount of time and which coincided with the amount of time the pod was in the public right of way. It existed in the public right of way from July twentieth to July twenty-sixth. And staff verified its removal on July twenty-sixth. Our traffic division reviewed the application from a technical standpoint. The city actually required that it could not be placed on Alice Street due to its narrow width, and instead that it could be placed on Withers Avenue. It was required to be placed against the curb, maximum width eight feet. There could be no encroachment into the travel lane, and it could not obstruct visibility from adjacent driveways and/or intersections. So there was a technical review that occurred. The city received an appeal on the pod from Mr. Colin Gallagher. He wanted to file this appeal, although he understood that the pod would be removed by July twenty-sixth per the application that was submitted to the city. He expresses three concerns in his appeal. The first be, being that it negatively impacts parking. It invited crime, and it violated the municipal code. From staff's perspective, pods do have temporary impacts on parking. We usually maybe one to two spaces, depending on how they place it on the street. The city does annual analyze all pod installations for their impact on circulation, and we require case-specific conditions of approval depending on the street. From our perspective, we do not see any evidence of crime related to pods in our community. And the, in conclusion, are, we believe that the permit was properly issued with site-specific review. Just other considerations to think about as we wrap up here. Renters occupy most of the city's housing stock, and renters periodically request pods to accommodate their moving needs. They rarely have the ability to move a pod near an apartment, like on an apartment site itself. In this case, the pod has been removed. The applicant only needed it for a finite period of time. From staff's perspective, the permit was properly issued after site-specific review. I will say this does raise one possible question, is that we do have a standard condition of approval on our encroachment permits at the back. It's down in the fine print that all encroachment permits have a condition of approval requiring its removal within a hundred and eighty days. In this case, the applicant only needed it for five days. If the council so desire, we can amend the standard permit conditions to require a reduced time period to be consistent with what applicants are requesting. That's not codified. That's just something that's on our application form. And with that, we're recommending that you deny the appeal and adopt a resolution upholding issuance of the encroachment permit.
All right, thank you, Kim. With that, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, staff, but we, we go to Mr. Gallagher. We'll have three minutes to present. Okay, I've been informed it'll be four minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Colin Gallagher. I'm resident of the city of Monterey, and I'm the appellant in this case. So this is regarding the pod or pods that were on Withers. The first one that was dropped was on July twentieth, and it did not have a notice upon it. And it was not placed against the curb, rather was on top of the curb or on the sidewalk, actually. And at the time when it was placed, and before it was placed, there was no notice indicating, prior to its placement, indicating that there was something that was going to be placed there. In my case, I previously worked with neighbors to plan a neighborhood or a community event. And we've always worked with the traffic division to, to establish signage indicating that there is going to be a, a partial or total blockage of a street, for example, to give notice to neighbors. I believe it's several days to a week prior to the actual partial or total closure of a street in the instances of encroachment in Monterey. Whether or not that this is actually required, in this case, I don't know, maybe not, but it should be. In any event, all of a sudden, the pod appeared on the twentieth. There was no permit upon it, and it was placed on top of the sidewalk. And neighbors, including myself, who arrived back late from work, then had to park, you know, seven or eight PM at night after closing a business, which, by the way, funds the city of Monterey, because we do our, our work to help fund the city and not merely ourselves. We then had to find parking two blocks, two and a half blocks away from our homes and then walk to our homes. So, and most people, when they're moving, as I pointed out in my recent comment, which is a matter of public record and is posted on the city website, don't need a week or a week and a half to move or longer than that. They need a day or two days at most. So the, the, the note that someone is saying that this would be a moving aspect or something is, is a bit ludicrous. You don't need five days to move. You need one to two days to move. And so this is kind of a ridiculous sort of a situation here. We don't need, this, this has implications for things like public events as well, where if somebody is using this in connection with storage for a public event, whether it was the Pacifica Grove events that were occurring during that. whether it was the Pacifica Grove events that were occurring during that time, as there were two that occurred during that time, or whether it was a prelude to Car Week, uh, Car Week storage, um, we don't need those kind of things happening on our streets. We need to be treated with respect, and event-related storage should be placed in venues, not in our, uh, streets. And so that's a policy implication, although this is a, um, a pod-specific issue relating to the pod placement on Withers. They're larger citywide issues, um, with respect to policy and event-related issues, because these pods can be used for anything. With respect to crime, yes, this does have a potential impact on crime because somebody can chop that lock, get into it, and the longer it sits there, they will have access to whatever's in there. And with respect to impacts, um, the more pods that are allowed to be in the city, the more parking impacts there are, so it's a cumulative impact. So I ask that you then, uh, look at this with a larger perspective and with a larger eye, and I ask that you deny the appeal because in my appeal, I ask that you deny not only, um, the pod, um, application itself, but any future applications that the neighbor might make for your renewals, or that the city might make in terms of a renewal of this pod application, because frankly, I don't want to see it on the street for another five or ten or fifteen days, or another a hundred and eighty days, or however much time they might want to sit there. I, you know, five days was too long. I certainly don't want to see it for another ten or a hundred and eighty. So I'm, you know, as I noted in my appeal, on July twenty-sixth, I think it was, I don't want to see it go on and on and on and on. So I, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, question to Assistant City Attorney. Would it be appropriate to, for counsel, ask the questions now, or should we go to public comment? Is that? What, what would be the more
So.
Effective process? I think I may have also, once again, lost the rhythm there.
It's okay. Um, it's fine to ask questions during the presentation. I guess we forgot to do that to staff. If you had them then, if you have questions for Mr. Gallagher, I think it makes sense to ask them now.
Okay.
Um, and then go to public comment.
Okay. Can we also revert back to?
If there are questions for staff, maybe ask them first, so Mr. Gallagher can have the benefit of hearing those.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. We'll, we'll go ahead and start then. Um, does counsel have questions for staff? No questions? Okay.
I do. Um, I, I, I heard, uh, Mr. Gallagher bring up a couple of, of points that I'm wondering if staff wants to, um, clarify, um, in particular, the location of the pod, um, and, and it complying with the, with the permit and then the notification as well.
So I don't have record on how the initial pod was installed, that the application was for one pod to be installed, removed, and the second pod to come in within those five days. Um, I don't personally have record of exactly where the pod was installed, but there was a condition of approval that it shouldn't sit on the curb and it should be adjacent to it. Um, ultimately, the second pod, um, I, I think after we got the complaint, our building staff was able to go out and confirm that it was properly located, but I don't know on the first one that Mr. Gallagher is referring to.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's it for me.
Kim, I have a question. Um, what you just described then is, in essence, what, uh, would be violating the municipal code? Or a description of how this, how the pod would be violating the municipal code?
If the, there was a condition of approval on the pod that it could not be placed on the curb. And so that was a specific condition of approval of the permit.
Right. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're gonna go to Mr. Gallagher now with, uh, any questions? Any questions from council?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to concur with what she said. It, it, um, the set about the second one, they, by the time they had placed the second one, they had posted a notice for the second one on, on it. Um, they had moved it off. They, when they plopped, plopped the second one down, it wasn't sitting on the curb, et cetera, but so on. Oh, God. Okay, I'm ready to listen to your question.
So, Mr. Gallagher, when in your, um, appeal, you say city code thirty-two dash six point one was not being observed. Does that have to do with the placement on the curb?
Uh, it has to do with the fact that, that one shall not obstruct a public right-of-way or a sidewalk or a public right-of-way or so on. Um, I'm paraphrasing what the city code says, but the encroachment permit is designed to, to give city staff flexibility, even though that city code exists, which I understand, but, but, um, but I, I think that when one issues an encroachment permit, one should do that within reason, which is why I issued my public comment, um, which is on record relating to this item prior to this meeting. In other words, you issue an encroachment permit for a neighborhood event or for a short-term encroachment, uh, or for, um, when, when there's going to be planned roadwork or something. Uh, you don't issue, um, an encroachment permit for something that's gonna be sitting there for five days or eight days or a hundred and eighty days, or, you know, or as stated on the, the permit, kind of an odd thing that maybe you might want to address, but, um, it, it's, I think there's, there's encroachment permits that, you know, materially contradict the city code statement that you cited. You know, that, that you wouldn't want to issue, and there's others you would want to issue, like short-term ones, yeah. Long-term ones, I don't think you would want to, because it would be contrary to that city code provision.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Uh, Mr. Gallagher, I have a question, actually. Um, during this, this period that the pod was present, did you yourself think that there was some kind of criminal activity that happened because of the presence of the pod, or any obstruction of parking as was described?
Uh, clearly obstruction of parking, um, because we couldn't park where it was. As far as criminal activity, um, none that I could see, but that I suspect, you know, there was a possibility of that happening, but I had no evidence of that. Uh, my concern is that if that continues, if that policy continues of permitting pods to be around town, then what is the, what is the effect of that? Then either you invite somebody to break into the pod, then that's a criminal activity. You know, as police officer dealing with, like, you can deals with break-ins all the time and has to respond to them, or somebody stores something in the pod, you just don't know what it is, and what is that facilitating? Because there's no regulation on what's in the pod, and the longer you allow them to be there and the more you allow it to be placed around the city, then what? What exactly are you dealing with? And, and frankly, the, the, the more that that happens, it's, it's a distinct possibility. So that hence my concern.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna take it to, uh, public comment. Folks who are in the chamber and would like to comment on this item, please line up behind the podium. All right, seeing none, we're gonna go online, and I'm gonna count down. Please identify yourself by raising your hand. Five, four, three, two, one. All right, so we'll bring it back to the council for discussion deliberation. All right, Councilmember Hoffa.
Yeah, I will, I have a comment, but I'll also make a motion to sort of get something on the table, so I would move to deny the appeal.
Second.
And then under discussion, I would say, um, Kim mentioned, you know, maybe staff could look at the time period, and I do think that might be a good idea. A hundred and eighty days does seem like, I, I, I don't think we generally would want pods being deployed for that long unless there's some special reason why it would need to be there, and I can imagine there might be some, but so, um, you know, if, if, depending on the workload, how that would affect your staff, so that's a consideration too, but I do think it might merit some, uh, attention.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yep, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. Under discussion, um, I, I'm gonna support the denial of the appeal with the motion. Uh, but under general discussion of, um, I'm not sure what some residents have for a choice. Uh, frankly, I, I heard from, uh, Mr. Uh, Gal, it's Gallagher, is that correct?
Yeah.
Um, I appreciate the, the thought. You've obviously put a lot of research into this and took the time and appreciate the the concern, but if we have, um, you know, property that is limited space, it's, it's not their own, they rent space, um, you know, pod is, is a reasonable effort. They may not have a truck. Uh, it may be cheaper to do that than it is to hire, uh, U-Haul. Um, you've got working folks that have shifts. Uh, if you've got two or three people living in a unit, uh, it may take them three, five days because not everybody's available, and not everybody's available to always be available on the same day to do that. So moving is a hassle, and I think we've, we've all gone through that. But having a pod, it's, uh, certainly one of those, those, uh, things that may be out of necessity. So as long as the street's safety deemed to be safe to park it there, and a fire truck can still get down the street, uh, I'd leave that to staff to determine. That's why there is a encroachment permit process that is required. I've had an encroachment permit for some construction at my house, and uh, they were gonna send a big, big truck that would have been hanging out in the street, and I said, no, we've got to make sure it can't pass at this point so that it's available, and so that's the kind of thing you have to navigate. When somebody goes to the counter to get a, an encroachment permit, there's, there's a lot that goes into it. The one comment I would have is it looks like the, um, the ordinance that, uh, is cited in here is accurate, that I don't see any conflict points here, because I hearken back to the point in the municipal code under our charter city that we actually have policing powers, not, not just the police, but we have policing powers to enact ordinances for public safety, and by es- issuing a encroachment permit, uh, there are certain liabilities that the person that draws the permit has liable. The city might have some liability, and and that's why we would send someone to look and check, issue the permit, and then they have requirements that they have to live by to get that permit. So it's not taken lightly, because we certainly don't want to see this thing parked halfway in the lane, and nobody can't pass. Uh, or nobody can pass, and we cause a problem. So there is a justification to have a process that is a permit application for fee. The one comment I would say is a hundred and eighty days seems like a very long time, uh, unless there's some special circumstances. Um, I can think of maybe construction and a home, home takes a while. Um, you know, but I, I would like staff to maybe review that and come up with what they would recommend. Uh, is a hundred and eighty days too long, and could they recommend something else? The other thing too is if someone is needing a pod to move an apartment, to move a house, and they're paying for the encroachment permit, and the time of that pod is only gonna be five days, do we want to charge the same amount that we would charge if it's staying a hundred days? So I, I think that that's something that staff could weigh in at a future time. Uh, so I'd, I'd like to see maybe it's a scalable fee based on recovery, but if it's a simple five days, then it's probably different than if it's gonna be sixty days. I mean, that's my first approach. The other approach too is, is the, um, Mr. Gallagher proposed that he'd like to see a denial of all future, um, you know, pods or containers, I suppose. I would just say that as a person that has to weigh in the appeal process, that would be outside of the scope, that that's not what we're considering here today. We're considering the merits of this case, agenda item five, of whether or not it should be, um, upheld or denied. And so in that case, I can't even consider any of those other, other ideas, because that's not what the purpose of this is. So, uh, that's all comments I have, and I agree with the motion, uh, or the second in the motion into deny the appeal.
Gina, just jumping in really quick, just to clarify, it's item number thirteen, and, and without, um, repeating any of the comments, I, I agree with the, the motion on the table.
Thank you for the correction.
I'm tired.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and yes, I'm not going to, uh, repeat. I agree with, uh, many of the points that my colleagues made. So with that, can we get a roll call, please?
Uh, Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Williamson.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Gallagher, for participating in the process and, and taking the time. Really appreciate it. Um, so next, uh, we'll go to item number fourteen, authorized city manager employment agreement, and I'll pass it over to city manager.
Um, Brett Neal will present.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-three, the end of the year November, uh, city council began the performance evaluation process for the city manager. This process was facilitated by an outside attorney with Lebert Cassidy Whitmore. Um, about two weeks ago, city council met and shared feedback in closed session. As a result of that process, uh, before you was the employment agreement for the city manager. Um, among other, uh, benefits, it's, um, requesting to extend the same salary increase that was afforded to all the other employees in the city, which is four percent. In addition, um, a three point five two percent increase due to a wage study adjustment, uh, that, um, places the city manager below, five percent below the median. And again, that's also something that was consistent, um, that was applied to various bargaining groups, um, different percentages of the citywide wage study. Also, I want to point out, um, council also established in this process a yearly performance evaluation period uh, beginning in January, uh, two thousand twenty-five. So it's, uh, um, staff's recommendation that the employment agreement for city manager be approved.
All right. Thank you so much. And, uh, with that, we'll go to public comments on this item. If you would please, if you're interested in, uh, making a comment, please line up behind the podium. We have one, and we'll go check on Zoom. If you're interested in providing a public comment on Zoom, please raise your hand, and I'll count down five, four, three, two, one. We have one. All right, we're gonna start in the chambers, please.
Hello, Eric Palmer, Monterey Vista Associate, Monterey Vista neighborhood. Um, I would just like to get information about performance evaluations and whether, um, those evaluations involve frontline staff. Um, I'd like to know if the objectives and results are shared with the public. I know I haven't seen those before in my seventeen years of working, um, in local government here. Um, and I think that's, I think that's it, and I think that's important when we're, I think it's great that, um, th- this is probably one of the, uh, best contracts that I've seen for frontline staff in, um, in a long time, since we had Fred Muir, the city manager. Um, and I think it's great that it's been extended to everyone. Um, but I think when we get to the level of executives and, uh, the cost of living increases, um, and the performance evaluations are included, um, I would, I would like to make sure that they're, uh, transparent, and, um, I'd like to find out, um, uh, that information. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go online.
I believe this is, uh, Ms. Viti. This is a telephone caller. Please go ahead.
Yes, this is Nina Viti. Um, I made comments, um, I believe it was at the last meeting on both this and the next item, which was about the city attorney. Um, and I won't repeat them except to say that the city is in many cases in a very unhealthy position um, regarding some of the decisions that are being made. Um, you heard in, during public comments, myriad comments from, um, vendors that are being, uh, some targeted, um, others, uh, simply being denied, um, what they have historically been able to do, and it almost has the feeling of driving out these people from the city. Um, at the previous meeting, there was a long litany of things that they provide to the city, to visitors, um, information services, recommendations, you know, amazing things that are helpful to this local economy, um, for free. And I had objected to the vendor permit process in the beginning because it seemed overly burdensome for people, and now there seems to be, uh, miscommunication or, uh, false information given to vendors about, um, their, um, how many tables and misreading of the, uh, ordinance that was adopted by the council. So I'm troubled when I see issues like this, that people come week after week after week with the same issues, and they're not being resolved. And these are both under the, the jurisdiction of the city attorney and the city manager, and, um, affecting people that are probably the most vulnerable in the city. So I, I'm very uncomfortable with the city So I, I'm very uncomfortable with the city moving ahead on either of these recommendations until problems like this are fixed. And the city really does become a transparent place and really does um, address issues that impact ordinary people. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Yes, Councilmember?
Yeah, um, I had a few comments I wanted to share. Uh, and with respect to the public comment, um, there were direct, people who directly report to the City Manager did provide and, and were surveyed. Um, so that was part of our evaluation process. Um, it is not really standard practice. It's probably not even legal for us to share our evaluation with the public. This is uh, evaluations are considered confidential, personal, personnel actions. So City Attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's the case. I just wanted to highlight some of the accomplishments of our City Manager in the past, you know, sixteen, eighteen months or so. Um, we went through a difficult housing element process, a very complicated, a very important and uh, challenging process. Um, we've submitted that to the state, our, our um, housing element. Hopefully that will get, um, where that's been approved, but that's a big accomplishment for City Council and for City Manager. Uh, City Manager has helped us implement a rental registry, which again is really quite complicated um, and and um, a, a big initiative that the city has not done in the past. The City Manager, again, working with council, has successfully negotiated contracts with our employee group, seven bargaining units, and um, we've, we're in the process of completing those. Um, he has worked again with council to implement our cannabis ordinance, which is now um, you know, in the process of being implemented at this time. Uh, we have been for a while working on improving our roads, and that's just an ongoing and again, very important, very expensive process that he's been leading. Uh, and over the last several years, um, he has worked with council to create reserve funds and to ensure that the city's fi- fiscal uh, and financial stability is preserved. So I just want to highlight, those were a few of the accomplishments. I think he uh, deserves to be recognized for that. And um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. I saw Mr. Mayor's uh, hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, clarify because I don't think that the agenda report, and thank you, Alan, for um, speaking to um, some of those accomplishments. I mean, there's a lot more. Um, and I, and I, and I understand you're just doing some, some high level highlights. I appreciate that. Um, in the agenda report, it doesn't um, speak to the, the, the uh, wage study i- in regards to um, the economics associated with that. And so I just was wondering, I guess, two questions I, to, to um, the City Attorney, if we can clarify what that looks like, or Brett can answer that question. And then also um, and Alan was alluding to this at the beginning of his comments, um, distinguishing around what is and is not appropriate to be sharing um, with the public.
So certainly with regard to the second question, all employees, including city managers and other executives, have a privacy interest in their personnel evaluations, um, their performance evaluations. Um, so no, we'd not be legally permissible to release that information, and that's why it's authorized specifically in the government code for a closed session. So that's with regard to that question, I, I think your other question, Brett, would be better to answer about the citywide compensation study.
Uh, just uh, some brief background with uh, regards to that. Also in two thousand twenty-three, um, the city uh, entered into a contract with an outside firm to do a citywide wage study. So that was all classifications uh, and all bargaining groups. Um, we, by the time we got the results, moved into negotiations, and many of the findings of those studies were implemented. Uh, they're in various contracts. It's very explicit which, which classifications received what the goal. Um, where, where we could find agreement was to be within five percent of the median. And so that's what I'm referring to when I make that statement um, regarding uh, the three point five two percent. That's from the wage study. We have sixteen uh, area comps that we utilize and look at emerit of information. And uh, from there, there, we had data that uh, indicated that our City Manager um, is actually a five point five two percent below market. But as the uh, agenda report does outline, three point five two percent is being proposed at this time.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. Nope, that does answer the question. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, to the uh, question that was raised by Mr. Palmer, um, I mean, you wouldn't have wanted your evaluation to be, you know, exposed in public the time that you worked for the city Monterey, as I wouldn't have been an employee for thirty-four years. We work under the doctrine of the Brown Act, and as the City Attorney has outlined, uh, that's specifically excluded from that. Um, an evaluation has been done on our City Attorney. Um, the five of us uh, have the charter strength and the direction we hire our City Manager, we hire the City Attorney. So that, that's our job. Those are the two employees we have. So I want to hit some highlights that, as I recall, um, for the City Manager. Uh, this evaluation that we did was, was actually uh, so the twenty-three to twenty-four, January, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but ending period of January twenty-fourth. So this, it dates back a little bit further. So the City Manager not only did all of those things that Mr. Hoffa outlined, a couple of those I didn't agree with because the council and I disagreed with that, but that's okay. That meant he still had work and had to direct staff's work and have public outreach. And so a tremendous amount of public outreach uh, has, has occurred for a variety of those things you listed. There's one other thing that kind of falls under the radar very frequently, but it's the fact that we have two military bases here and we have superb liaison with those two milit- military bases. And specifically under the IXUS, uh, the City Monterey and staff has designated staff that provide uh, what's the figure? Is it thirty million or forty million, City Manager? It ve- it varies. I mean, depends.
It's uh, it's uh, ten to fifteen million a year.
Yeah, but get it automatic. Yeah. So it depends on how much work they want to have done, and that requires staff that's dedicated to make sure that they deliver the services for the Defense Language Institute, supervising nearly four hundred personnel. I think it's seven directors. I got that right. Seven directors. Uh, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of projects. And I just want to highlight something that Mr. Hoffa said that was the, the street improvements that we've seen with a paving rating of fifty-seven up to seventy-five now, eighty-one. Eighty-one, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't read your last uh, you know, weekend report. So eighty-one, Andrea? Okay, so we'll say that proudly. That, that is one of the significant things that you see. You, if you pay attention, you live in the city, you see the activity of how our streets are being improved. It all starts and stops with the direction of the City Manager. The number of meetings he goes to, the number of questions he answers. Um, the time that I schedule with him is precious because I know he is very frequently stacked up. Hour to hour, five days a week, and the clock doesn't stop at five. We get emails on the weekends, we get highlights, uh, we get phone calls. So uh, the City Manager is a very busy job and um, he does an outstanding job. And I just want to highlight that I'm very satisfied when I look back at the last year of his time that we evaluated him. There were a tremendous number of projects where, when you see it, you just start to think, wow, there, there were a lot of moving parts and a lot of accomplishments that the City Manager, the City Attorney, and all of the city staff were able to accomplish. And it's not us that's out there digging the shovels into the holes. It's not us that are signing the contracts. It's, it's not the council that is um, you know, having all those meetings with city staff to make things work. It all falls on the shoulder of the City Manager. And I appreciate that, and I know it's a, a lot of things are unseen by the public. Um, if you're curious, get a copy of the city budget. He executes every line of that. Get a copy of all the work plans that are available on the website. Get connected on getting all of the updates, read the news releases, see the uh, the monthly statements that come out of the City Manager's office. Peruse the city website. It's all there. And there's a lot of significant activities that are there. And whenever you're reading all of that, realize that the council may have voted on something. But tomorrow morning, I guarantee you, he's sitting in a meeting with his staff to say, okay, here's the agenda, here's the, here's the strategy, here's the fulfillment on what the City Council has acted on. And uh, greatly appreciated. So, public, look on the website and dig, and if you can't find it, give any one of us a, a call, and we'll help answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I, 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 I wanted to give some appreciation to, to Eric's comments. I mean, I think that uh, as has been stated by staff, we need to be careful in regards to the information that we share. Um, but just to um, s- speak a little bit to what, what, what Ed was just saying as, as far as a, a pushback to his comments. Um, I, and, and this is kind of speaking more theoretically. I don't want to speak necessarily to this specific situation. Um, I just think it's important for us to try to be as transparent as possible and try to get as much feedback and input as possible. So I think that hearing from all different stakeholders in regards to their concerns um, as it relates to, and I'm, uh, you know, I can speak to this point for, for this item and the next item for both the City Manager and the City Attorney, which this council is responsible for, I think is, is important, helpful and productive, whether it's positive um, or areas of improvement. So we need to be able to hear that feedback and having an established process um, would be helpful um, to, to ensure that we're getting, we're getting all that feedback. So I, I appreciate the comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh, I'll just add that um, I think uh, a performance evaluation is, is a healthy thing to have in any organization. I think many of us in our professional lives go through that, and it's an opportunity to really celebrate uh, victories. It doesn't necessarily have to be uh, a negative or daunting thing. So um, I, I think there's also something to consider here in terms of um, what information can be made available to the public in terms of performance evaluation. Details of what's included, hmm, maybe not, and, and hopefully not. But I think the public does have a right and does uh, have an interest in knowing what are the questions that are being asked. So how do we uh, perform that? What, what kind of information are we looking for when we uh, do performance evaluations? Not necessarily what the responses are. Um, but are, what are the questions so that uh, the public knows um, really what are the areas of interest for uh, for the council? I don't know if that's already something that's publicly visible, but maybe something to consider that. So with that, um, I don't remember. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Make a motion to authorize uh, the City Manager's employment agreement as presented.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, with that, we'll move on to uh, item number fifteen. Authorize the Second Amendment to City Attorney Employment Agreement, and I'll pass it over to City Manager. All right.
Um, at the risk of sounding redundant, I um, the same process occurred for the City Attorney that I just outlined for the City Manager. Um, so again, in two thousand twenty-three, City Council began this performance evaluation for our City Attorney. Uh, the process again was also facilitated by the same outside attorney with Lebert Cassidy Whitmore. And uh, in addition, and two weeks ago, City Council met and shared feedback in closed session. As a result of this process, um, the Second Amendment uh, is before you, which extends uh, the same salary increases that was provided to all other employees in the city of four percent. Um, in reference to the same um, wage study that was conducted by an outside firm, found that the City Attorney was one point nine one percent um, uh, below market. And so uh, this agreement for our City Attorney, the Second Amendment, is um, asking for the four percent uh, salary increase as well as the one point nine percent wage study adjustment. Um, the City Attorney is also held to the yearly performance evaluation that will begin in January two thousand twenty-five.
All right. Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll take it out to public comment. Anyone in the chambers interested in making a public comment, please line up behind the podium. Seeing none, we'll go online, and I'll count down five, four, three, two, one. We have none online. All right. We'll bring it back to the council for discussion, deliberation, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Um, any final comments?
Yeah, just briefly under discussion, I just want to highlight again for the public the important benefit that the City Attorney provides. Um, she has undoubtedly saved the city millions of dollars by protecting us from actions that would create liability. And her and her staff have done a really outstanding job of litigating a number of important cases this year that have saved the city, again, a great deal of money. So um, uh, I, I serve, as other council members do, on many different regional boards and commissions. They all have uh, legal representation, and the city's legal representation is by far the best. Um, it really is. And uh, and uh, our City Attorney deserves a lot of credit for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoffa. Yeah, Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I was just uh, looking at the documents that uh, you know, the City Attorney provided us about her activities for the year. And uh, it's, it not only supervising a very busy office with uh, excellent staff, but uh, we, we get to hear reports from her on, and sometimes in closed session on litigation. Uh, we get to hear uh, status, and also in the public, she keeps us straight in terms of what the statutes tell us, uh, and, and gives us some clarity. And keeps us in, you know, the high, the high, high side of the Brown Act. So none of us are lawyers, but we can't function very well without a good City Attorney. And tonight, we're blessed to have a, an assistant City Attorney that's equally outstanding. Um, so the City Attorney for me um, means a lot because I'm not a lawyer and I'm an ex-cop, and Lord knows I've made mistakes, and I, I don't study the law anymore, and so I need to be reminded. It's not my field of expertise, and it is, it is her field of expertise. And she does it very well, does it with grace, and saves us a tremendous amount of heartburn and uh, money. Uh, because I don't know how many trip and falls that we've had filed against the city, but that happens very often. We have collisions that are involving city staff. That happens on occasion. We have folks that, uh, you know, we live in a litigation world where the least little thing, someone wants to blame somebody else, and as they say, well, who do they blame? They blame the people who've got some money, so they come after the city. So Chrissy's a superstar in my book, does an outstanding job, and uh, she's blessed to have an outstanding staff, but great year for her. Much respect to her decision-making and her ability to also be patient when she knows the answer, but we're just bouncing all over the place, and she allows us to explore and then come to her for some clarification. So um, kudos to her for the way she, her work style and the workload that she has. And thankfully, right now, she's on a much deserved vacation. And by the way, I share a birthdate with her, which was last week. And so if she's listening, happy birthday, Chrissy, belated.
Let's hope she's not.
Well, if she tells me she is, I'm going to yell at her.
Well, happy birthday to you both. Uh, all right. With that, let's do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Um. With that, we'll move, uh, on to council comments. Okay, Councilmember Hoffa.
So, um, I represent the city on AMBAG, the Associated Monterey Bay Area Governments, and, uh, as folks know, we received a grant. Um, through AMBAG from the state to help with our Madison Street Affordable Housing Project. There were concerns that the state would reduce significantly, reduce some of that funding due to the budget issues. As it turned out, uh, the reduction is significantly less and, uh, AMBAG basically reaffirmed that grant at our last meeting. Um, the other thing I wanted to just, uh, and I mentioned this last, I think last time, but. I, I do think it makes sense for staff to work with vendors and other, um, interest groups that. Uh, wanna make sure that our vending, uh, is, is, um, safe, make sure that that area is safe and attractive. But also to make sure that it works for those vendors, um, you know, clearly they're hardworking. People and I do think they contribute to the ambiance of the wharf. So hopefully at some point we'll have. You know, I don't know whether it would make sense for that to be some kind of a workshop or. Whether it would should be a study session or whether it should just be a meeting, maybe with the city manager and, and, uh. And the, um, uh, you know, some, some of his, uh, planning staff. And the interested parties, maybe the mayor or vice mayor, I don't know, but I think, uh, we want to make sure we address this. And help people get their permits. In the meantime, we should be. Making sure people get their permits and if we have to fix things for the future, then let's do that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Smith or?
Uh, yes, I've got a. Comment on, uh, Mercy Meeting we had yesterday. Uh, for MST. Uh, so I want to report to the council, uh, what that was about. Um, as we are coming in rapidly to the. Uh, California Coastal Commission hearing on their calendar at the Portola Plaza, September eleventh through the thirteenth. I'll encourage you to check their website to see where in their. Three days is the application for, uh, MST. Monterey Salinas Transit Surf Bus and Bus Rapid Transit Project. Uh, so I reported back two, two weeks ago to you, um, I answered some questions in terms of rail. I want to refer everybody to the application that MST submitted. It is a project submitted by MST, not Tamsi. Tamsi is the holder of the property and they, they have, uh, granted easement rights to MST. This is a project that actually, uh, was listed in Measure X. Uh, I believe that was twenty twenty. For the assessment of, uh, a tax, a sales tax. For a regional transportation. Um, funding source for thirty years. Uh, fifteen million was assigned to, uh, the bus surf. Project as well as fifty million to Fortag. Uh, it passed Monterey County sixty-seven percent. Uh, so that, that's where, uh, with this plan was able to actually get going and get the details of the design. Um, they have sought funding, they have responded and on Monday. Uh, we added to Mr. Carl Sadoric's response to Dr. Carl. Uh, Carley Hart, uh, the chair and commissioners. Uh, in preparation for the coastal commission meeting. Um, staff and the folks that we've consulted with and hired to help on that project. Uh, reviewed the staff work from the coastal commission and identified forty-one. What they believed were critical errors. In the response from staff and the staff's recommendation to decline. As we know, uh, the presentations go to the coastal commission to make that decision. About what to, uh, what to authorize. There's always negotiations, uh, with the coastal commission. There's always levels of mitigation. And there's a lot of information out there that is, you know, floating around. Uh. From the design point to now, two weeks away from the final decision point with the coastal commission. So those that have, um, questions and as we heard tonight. Uh, some criticism of, you know, me alone, not, you know, caring about the train. Uh, I encourage people to read the applications. To closely read the documents that were presented to the coastal commission. Read the information. And, uh, take it from there. And we all have disagreements. Uh, but facts are facts. And what is in a contested piece is whether or not. Uh, rail should be slightly displaced. Or completely taken out. But I want to remind everybody, the rail that's there was put in in eighteen eighty. And the last time it was used, I think is, uh. The late eight nineteen eighties or maybe even early nineteen nineties. So the rail that's there can't be used and has to be replaced. But the application with the coastal commission is for the coastal access and easement. And so, uh, tune in, attend the meeting if you choose to or watch it on Zoom. And I think the date is still available to be a speaker if you choose to. And so that, that's all I can report to the council on MST's, uh, letter. A letter's been sent back. Um, answering each of those forty-one. Uh, what we believe and our staff believes are, uh, errors in the staff report provided by the coastal commission. Uh, so. That's, that's the train that's moving forward. To the coastal commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so just reporting out from, from M one W, um, the expansion is moving along, um, as planned from the get-go. We're, we're, we're not seeing any delays. We're, we're tracking, um, as anticipated. So just to reiterate. There are two elements to the expansion of the Pure Water Monterey Project and just to. Um, speak to that for a second, for those that may not be fully, um, aware of what that project is. The Pure Water Monterey Base Project. Um, provides clean, safe and, um, affordable, um, additional water supply to our region. Um, it takes different source waters, including our wastewater, stormwater runoff and water from the ag industry. And, uh, puts it through an advanced purification process and stores that in our aquifers. So, um, in, um. Sorry, in twenty twenty, I believe, um, the. Um, the board had approved, um, moving forward with, with an expansion of that project. Um, and there are two elements to it. The first is the actual expansion of the pure water. Um, purification facility. And then there's the additional injection wells to store that water, additional water allocation in the aquifers. So. The, the expansion of the actual facility is gonna, um, is. Planned to be completed in July, um, of next year and then the injection wells. Um, will provide first water in, in August of next year. So. Exciting news to see that continue, um, moving forward and just wanted to provide that as a brief update from, from an M one W perspective. And then just one last update that I'd like to share with the community. Um, as most folks are aware. Um, the, the elections are, um, up and running and it, and it's, the, the candidates for. The Monterey City Council rate, uh, race are, are in full swing. There are two candidates for each of the three races that are. Um. Up this November. Um, and, um, the first candidate forum is next week, August twenty-seventh from six to eight P M. And it's hosted by Del Monte Beach Neighborhood Association. Um. So I just encourage folks to come out and listen and, um. Uh, as one of the candidates, I look forward to engaging in a really healthy discussion with the community and. And I think this, this whole democratic process is going to really help. Um, make sure that the city of Monterey moves forward in a, in a positive direction. So. Make sure you get out and, and participate, be involved here from all the candidates and make sure you vote. And the ballots go out October seventh, so time is of the essence here. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. I have no comments, so I'll pass it over to city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. Let me start with, um, personal thank you to the city council for the kind comments you, you had. Um. And I appreciate everything, uh, that was said. Um. Professor Haffer is, is a, is an English professor and so I, I think he might appreciate the, the reference to Bertolt Brecht. Um, who, who wrote, um, a Walker's poem about history. I don't know if you recall that, but basically he was asking questions. Who? Who conquered India? It wasn't Alex the Great, who conquered the, the Hans. It wasn't Caesar, et cetera. And so, um, all those accomplishments that, that I pride myself of having accomplished have been done through staff. And, uh, the staff, uh, no matter who and where they stand and where they work deserve all the credit on that I can. Uh, be lucky enough to claim and I wanted to state that because, uh, all the nice things that were said wouldn't be possible for, for excellent staff. And then I wanted to make extra mention of that tonight. Um. And that poem came to mind and, and I hope you read it tonight. Uh, the, the other part is, um, street vendors. We are planning, uh, actually for a town hall meeting that we have, uh. Pencilled in right now for September ninth. Um, we. Sep- September eleven, I'm sorry, on nine eleven, uh, on September eleven. So that is, uh, already squared away. Of course, this is still all in draft form, but we'll make the appropriate announcement. When we are ready to, to officially set everything up. Um, and the other part is we will host, uh, a city staff, our traditional candidates. Meeting where basically the candidates, uh, as well as incumbents can, uh, will meet, uh, together with city staff and we provide a two. To two and a half hour overview over the different functions of the city. And, uh, share with them, uh, also what, what are our current, um. Uh, highlights of our work program. So we do this every two years when there is an election and we'll do it this year as well. And, uh, our assistant city manager, Nettie Rosha Nasatira, will reach out to. Uh, the candidates so that we find mutually convenient time. Uh, we picked a date already, but I, I think that is falling apart as we are speaking. And so we're working on that to put this together. It will be also around the time of, uh, in the week of nine eleven as well. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager. Um. We'll be moving into, uh, um. Close session in a little bit and, uh, we'll be covering conference with legal counsel exists. Existing litigation pursuant to government code. Section five, four, nine, five, six point one, general employees of Monterey. Uh, case number SF CE two zero three two dash M. Uh, and also conference with agency labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven point six. For labor negotiations. Uh, agency negotiators, uh, Brett, uh, Brett Neal, Gina Russo, employee organizations, general employees of Monterey. Um. So any, uh, members of the public who wish to, uh, make any public comments on this item, you can please line up next to the podium. Seeing none. Do we have any folks interested in public comment on Zoom? I'll count down five, four, three, two, one. All right. So with that, we'll move to the, uh, next item. Um. We are closing today's meeting. In memory of Don Neal. City electrician. Who passed away last Thursday. Don had been with the city since two thousand six. And was known for his knowledge, work ethics, dedication and compassion. Don's meticulous attention to detail transformed our streets each December during the holidays. And he always made sure the Colton Hall tree was. Ready for the holiday and tree lighting ceremony. Behind the scenes, he powered many seamless celebrations and community events. When storms threatened, Don ensured that generators were ready for outages, safeguarding the roads. Tunnels and buildings we rely on for city operations. Don had an amazing way in communicating stories. And his kind kindness brightened countless lives through personalized customer service. He eagerly embraced old and new electrical systems. Always adapting and learning. Don took pride in his career with the city of Monterey and his love for his family. Wife Amy and his daughters, um, Lu- Lucia or Lucia, I'm not sure, but thank you for being here. Um, and Julia, who were his pride and joy. Don has left his mark on this community. And he will forever be missed and not forgotten. Rest in peace, Don. I'd like to, um, see if we can all give Don a moment of silence. All right. Thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn to close session.